Time.
It just went down. They just went down again. But it should be green, right? Green.
They're connected?
I mean, I've got it unmuted.
What is the?
They're charged. They have to be charged with a red light wouldn't be coming on.
Yeah. It doesn't say it's not.
We turned it down yesterday.
Mine?
Oh, anybody's.
It gets working.
It goes out all the time.
Because I know Beth Barris had a paper to write.
Because Saturday.
AC cord for that?
It was down, I think.
Okay.
Like, oh, yeah, because I'm.
I gotta reset. When it happened, like, physically. Wait, I wait ten seconds, turn it back on.
Yeah, it was down. I know Saturday.
It was not there.
But then sometimes it'll be one house and not the other house that it's down on.
Yeah. That's just weird. I'm looking forward to the new stuff when they get it finally.
Yeah, that's what I was telling her.
Yeah.
Our yard.
We have an AC plug to charge it.
Not to mine out.
How does it get charged?
They were sitting on the thing. You're just setting.
Well, that's a new one. Can we use your laptop?
Yeah. Yeah.
How do you test it? Scott, see if he can hear us.
Yeah, go ahead. I hear you.
I could also unmute my laptop. Catch something at least.
I could hear. Can you hear me?
He's texting Scott to see if Scott can hear us because Scott's on here.
I can hear. Can you hear me?
How'd your track team do?
I had to leave early because of the cemetery meeting. Carlisle came late, so I didn't get to see anything.
I figured.
By the time I had to leave.
Typical.
Yeah.
They can call that was the accident.
So it was picture. Picture daddy too.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Junior high pictures, high school pictures, we were setting up for the meet. Carlisle was late. It's just been a little chaotic.
I can imagine.
I hate missing it, but it was definitely chaotic.
I know. Both kids had a game and came up from here, ran a picture up, ran home. Got her ready, dropped her off, ran to Oakwood, watched half a Parker's game.
My days has been messed this way. Had this tonight. We have a meet on Thursday in Monroe, which I thought was next week. So I got online to try to, I accept to submit my roster online, but there's two different websites that you can do. It was in the other one that we have, so I have to tag my entire roster back into it.
Nothing.
And then I got to where I have to get to the specific meet. His passport, they crafted, and they hadn't sent me any passports, so I had to. It's just been, you know, and it's do it like nine AM tomorrow.
Of course.
So. It's just been like one thing after another.
Your coach.
Coach girls track middle school. Yeah.
We didn't have anything.
This is year four or five. The son that graduates that. Oh, okay. Yeah. That'd be a good job. Lot of work, though.
It's a key mail.
I'm just watching what our athletics.
Do the high school or wouldn't be as.
Yeah. Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
If you're in a bigger school, I think you'd be, because you have help. Our guys at. So, hey.
He's not going to teach it. Somebody said, well, if you're in the middle, we find you to just like to play.
So our high school. Our high school. Does our.
I mean, as long as he can hear.
Just turned his mic on top.
Hello, are you there?
Well, yeah, so you can be like assistant principal. So he was going back.
Everybody else is muted. He's unmuted. That's me.
Okay.
That's what I usually do is with the TV.
Warmer weather is, you know, we have some experience and.
But if he can hear us.
I keep telling those who resume that.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna be out for a year.
Yeah, junior high, I coached junior high football and junior high track, so. Yeah. Oh, my gosh.
On the digital microphone. That's the serious one.
Yeah.
Should be.
The Yay link? I thought that was the.
But it was off.
I don't even see that on YouTube.
And I said, what's nice about the girls is that you'll tell them.
I don't know. Yeah. Well, having seventh, eighth grade boys in the fall for football. Tom gag line. Same thing with girls in the spring. Girls definitely are, it's definitely a totally different animal. Totally different.
He also talks.
Yeah, it takes a little bit to come from there really too.
You have to dial that. Being on the.
You just put it on the thing and. Tell it to you.
Yalike is what's the speaker or the microphone.
He says I can hear you. Scott.
Right.
Scott says he can hear us.
Yeah, it's a good start.
Did we unmute our laptops?
Scott, what, I just leave it whatever it is.
Scott says he can hear us.
All right.
Scott says he can hear us.
Scott said.
He can hear us.
Hear us.
Okay, it's seven oh seven. I'd like to call this. The regular meeting of the county trustees' order. He's saying from pledge allegiance.
To the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Mr. Hastings, could we have the roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Throff here. Mr. Staub here. Mr. Potter here. All are present.
All right, let's move on to visitor comments. We have Joe Garrett from Cray Bell is here. Come up and. Get your name and address. I'm Joe Garrett. With representing Cray Bell. It's out of Mansfield, Ohio, but I actually live in Delaware County. Ohio, so that's where I'm from. I'll be your representative from Cray Bell, and I wanted to stop and say hello and get the, you know, introduce myself. When Scott came down and met with you, I was unavailable that evening. I had actually two meetings that night. Someplace else that I haven't attended to clients that were renewing their programs, so I had to be there, so I wasn't able to make it. So I just wanted to come down and introduce myself and say, you know, I'll be the guy that'll be handling things and answering questions and probably do the public input. Now, one of the questions that I did have, and unfortunately, our inside gentleman is on vacation this week. And he's a better source of, because he's the guy that files at the stop. But I wanted, it looks like they had sent you guys the resolutions for putting electric and natural gas on the ballot. And I didn't know if those actually got approved.
We have those tonight.
Okay. So when, when you when you take those, when those get filed, have that, once they stamp them, take, take two sets with you. Because we will need a set stamped from the board of elections. I'm not saying this makes sense, because if you walk it out, it really doesn't, but it's the PUCO rules. When we, when it goes to ballot and passes, we have to do an operation in government's plan, which will provide, we have to do public meetings on that, which I'll come down and do. But then there'll be an application. You guys will have to adopt that plan, and there's an application that we will fill out. And we submit all that to the PUCO to get your certificate, certification. As part of that, they want or require those, the resolution documents stamped by the board of elections showing that it was on the ballot. Now, I think it's crazy, because I would think, wouldn't you rather have a certificate showing it was on the ballot and passed, which they also do? But no, they want, so when you, when they go and you take it there, if you have two copies and have the board sign two copies, then just have them stamp, I'll give you back one, make you point if they're on the ballot. Because we're gonna need it. Otherwise, we have to then contact the board of elections and have them make a copy after the fact. So if you can get that and get that to us, then we just file it, so we'll have it when we need it.
Scan, copy, reward?
Yeah. We'll do it. Yeah, so, so if you have those, then if you don't need these, is there any questions you have for me?
Yes, as far as helping to get this passed.
Yes.
What, what's the meeting?
So what we do is we do three mailings and a public meeting. We will usually start a couple months out with the mailings. With the last one being kind of, we tend to do two to three weeks prior to the meeting. Two or three weeks prior to the election, we'd like to hold the meeting where I'll ask, okay, can I use your facility? You know, what date and time, and who schedules that? I guess I probably, that would be good to know tonight.
Shawna schedules it.
Shawna schedules it?
Yeah.
Mark, yeah.
Has access to. Okay, so. But then we get that information, and we work back from there on the mailings, because on the first two mailings, we will put on there at the meeting time and, you know, location and time. And those two mailings will go out. The first one typically goes out to everybody, the second two go out to people that have voted. So the first one, we go to everybody, so somebody can't complain anymore, aware, but we're not spending money on the second and third one, people are, they're just don't vote. But then we'll, I'll come down and I'll hold the meeting. I put on a little presentation for them, you know, a little PowerPoint. And then answer questions. Some are well attended, some aren't. What we may try to do, Jackson just hired us tonight. Yeah, yeah, so I was just there. I was there and I came here. So we, I know Randy for a long time, so getting him for first, because I gotta go to Germany. What we may do, and what I like doing when, when possible, is make the communities aware of both meetings. Because you're so close together that if I can't make it, then you guys are having it, but I'm interested in have questions. I'm not too big of an ass to drive up to Jackson.
Right, we're all the same, it's cool.
Yeah. And you're, you're, you know, it's not, not too bad. So I will push to try to coordinate those meetings so that people that want the information, if that night doesn't work for them, because they have another meeting, or they're, whatever they've got going on, they can attend. And we've done that in the past. And you don't get a lot, but you do get some. Because I'll ask, hey, where'd you come, you know, and I, we do have, we just did down in Warren County. We have quite a few, and we we had three communities all within a five mile distance that we took on, and we, we publicized all three meetings. And when we had gentlemen that, you know, they, they crossed over. So that, that would be a benefit to have a Jackson on at the same time. I will talk to Perry. Perry is a client of ours. They put on a few years ago, and it failed, it was closed. But there were some other circumstances going on there that I.
There's still other circumstances.
I know, I know. I'm being, I'm being recorded at the time, so I think those, those circumstances probably had more to play or had something to play. Also, too, at that time, rates weren't ten point nine cents. So that, that, that factors in. So. So we'll work that out, but so that's, yes, we will do those mailings. We will then come down and hold those meetings, and I think hopefully that will be. It'll allow the people that have questions or want to know to know.
You know, assuming it passes in both townships, or is in Jackson, can we combine them for?
We typically, we typically will. So you can combine with, within utilities, right? You can combine more of it. It's really works strongly. So not only would we combine you, but we will sync, sync you up with other communities, you know, like we just did Lanier Township, Warren Preble. And Quinn Township in Preble is going to be on the number as well as, as Jackson and West Alabama. And let's say you guys and Jackson, let's say Perry says, yeah, let's give it another go. Then, yeah, we will put you guys all together, but we will try to sync you up so that when your program expires, the first program expired, that maybe we're then bringing in a few more people at the same time. And there is some benefit to that. It's not. People can, will use that to sell. And, and there's some legitimacy, but it's not. The lowest price we ever got was for a community, I think, of eight hundred homes. So by themselves. And it really has more to do with timing than market. You know, it's not, it's not going to, you know, whether or not you go to Lowe's or Home Depot or Menards and find the cheapest price on two by four. Not what we're doing. It's more buying commodities. So it's more like buying corner soybeans, where you're going out on a commodity market. You're trying to make the determination of when the right time to purchase is. And so that has more to do with it than what, what size is. Now, size becomes important in the fact that the suppliers will be motivated to maybe take a little bit less, but it's not significantly less than the margin. So you might, you might get a, by taking a big group, maybe you get a six point, you know, eight versus six point nine. Because they cut their margins a little bit, but you're not going to go from a six point nine down to a six, because they don't have that kind of margin to do. So, and the size of, the size. Yeah, I think we're one of the largest in Ohio, so when we put you with multiple groups, you know, when you, when you're talking about bidding out a hundred million kilowatts or, or more, I mean, we, we manage over a billion kilowatts of power in Ohio. So once you get north of a certain number, there, there's not a significant rate of return. You kind of, you kind of cap it out. You know, a township, say like Miami Township's fine here, they're gonna get the best shot out the door period. You guys are big enough, but you will too. Okay, so it doesn't hurt to sync up. Where it's more important, I believe, is to run areas that inner work, go to school together, go to church together, same grocery store. It's more important to sync those up to make sure that you don't get into the, well, how do you get a better deal than I did? Or they did a better job than we did, or they got this and we got that. And it can make, it can, monetarily, it's usually not much of a difference. The difference between the six point nine and the six point eight over a year is next to nothing. You know, it's insignificant. Just that being all truthful. We can get the six point eight, we want to get it, right? Want to get the best you can, but really dollar wise. But when you're talking ten point nine versus six point nine, now you're talking about some money. But at, at that point, but it's still good for just not, not having communities thinking, well, they, they did a better job than we did, or they did worse than these guys. You, you, you'll see that and you, you see it. Not saying it will happen here, but you see, but I think from that benefit, putting communities together so they're all on the same. Now, one of the things that affects that is load, right? So the load data up in, like in Clark County, quite a few programs up there, we went to bid, I got prices for four townships all the same time, same time. They range from six point eight to seven point oh seven. And the reason is, is it's how your community uses power. So they look, they look at load usage. So when people come in, they quote a price and say, oh, I can get you guys this rate. They're, they're, they're BSing that, because they don't, until they see the load data, you don't know. You don't know what that, you know, you might be able to do better, you might, might be worse, because it depends on how much power you use and when your community uses it. And in that instance, you have one community whose power is more towards flat baseline, and one who had more spikes during, on peak. You know, that could, who knows why, it could be a lot of reasons for that. One of the worst places to try to do power and get a deal for is a water park. Because there, you know, data is nothing, 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 nothing. It's summertime. It's up to here for a few months, and then perhaps right back down. They don't like that. Because they, they need to have, they want, they want to see average all the way across the border for how they have to purchase. So they don't like those big speaks. So there's a lot of things that go into it. It's not, like I said, it's not like shopping for two by fours. The residents tend to think it is. You know, they think, well, you got this, well, why don't we go over here and get that? It, it just doesn't work that way, but I, I think for ease of the plan, for people to be behind the plan and, and for it to be successful, you want, you want buy-in, you don't want to create any rough points. And so I think from that standpoint, it's better to do it everybody at the same time, so everybody has same price. And it, it, because these things tend to just operate. The first six months, you get phone calls. Okay? Utility will give us a wrong address, because we get the data from them. And they'll have an address that's in this instead of that. It's wrong, and they get a letter they shouldn't have get. You know, they'll make a phone call. And then you'll get people that did not pay any attention, don't vote, and they'll figure out three months down the road that you, they got switched and they're mad about it. Because nobody told them. You'll get that phone call. But typically, once you get six months in, it, they just run, they, people, and then if you, then they want, they, they participate and they don't, they don't want to, they want to have their, they want that safety net. Right? I don't want to have to go out and track, is this, how do I know, is this a good price or not a good price? Will this be a good price? They want me to sign this for three years. Should I sign this for three years or should I not? They don't know. They don't want to know. And if I didn't do aggregation, I wouldn't want to know either. You know, I'd be part myself in the aggregation, say, hey, they got guys that are doing this stuff, and I'm good with it. I'm not gonna have to worry about super highs, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not gonna get my bill in July and find out that AP went to ten point nine from four point, what was it? Four point, it's four point eight. You know, in May. In June first, it went to ten point nine, and some people didn't realize it till they got the bill in July.
It's gone up again.
I think it's gonna probably go down a little bit, but I would say maybe like ten and a half. Not, you know, it, it's, but, so you guys don't feel alone. The rest of the state of Ohio copied the same model, so they're all going up too. So AP, Earth Energy Companies, which are the essences, they're all, they're all going to be above ten cents come June first this year. Duke got lucky, very lucky. They're probably only going to be in the mid nine and a half, pushing tenth. So they'll probably be the lowest, but, yeah, you guys will have company. So, yeah, it was kind of funny when you go and talk to me and you try to tell them this is coming, this happened, and here's what's gonna happen. So I have a lot of clients. I'm, I'm, I'm mostly, I'm the guy that has the most AEs, so. I know exactly what happens, how people reacted, and what the questions are, and, and what they want, and I said, this is gonna happen everywhere, but when you go try to tell them, you know, they think you're crazy. You know, and I said, I'm just telling you, guys, it's gonna happen. I can tell you what the result will be, because what will happen, because right now prices are down. The prices go, prices will go up, the market will go up accordingly. You know, it's, it's gonna go up. Market's gonna go up. And so typically, what happened here in, in this market is, is if you waited in July and said, well, I want a deal, there was no deal that you had. You know, the market was up to eleven and twelve cents. When the utility was at ten point nine, there was nothing, and people are just calling, and they just thought, well, I just call every day. It's like the market's not moving now, you know, it's just not, there's not, you, you can't buy cheaper, because again, it's not a product. It's a market. That's what, what it's trading at. And it was, and it was kind of like, well, it's it's up that high, it just won't move down. I think the other community is, we're gonna see the same thing. So, you know, and what we'll do is we'll, 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 we'll ask the view some things that, you know, if it passes and we get certified, we'll ask and bring you to sign some, I think you have an LOA. As you, you know, to you. That becomes important after it passes, because it gives us the ability to act quickly on your behalf. It allows us to set a price and find something lower than that, because, because we are taking a pair of markets. The market does not follow township, the thirteen hundred, what is it, thirteen hundred and eighty-eight or something, townships in Ohio, it's meeting schedules. The market moves, the market moves, and so when you meet once a month or twice a month, you may, you know, you may not, you may miss the local, honestly. And so to be in a position, and it didn't used to be this way. It used to be much more stable, and you could, you could meet, make meetings, those guys would hold prices. But at least here recently, in the last year, if you aren't set up to be able to act on the day that market trends down, you, you can miss it. Not that you won't get a good price, but you, you, you can miss it. The trick is knowing, you know, where the bottom is. Don't act too soon, but don't act too late. So those are all things we will do. We got, we got a ways to get there, you know, it has to go to the ballot and get passed, and we have to get set up, and but those are things that we do manage, and we will explain to you and say, here's why we're wanting to do this. And at the end of the day, the reason I went to work with this gentleman is I've been a trustee since two thousand and ten. And when I first was approached and heard about it, I did not like it. There were some things that I, I said, no. And when Scott came to him, he did some things I thought, well, that's the way it should be done. The main thing that I liked, and it's still prudent today, I can, I can just tell you. The decisions are made from a resident point of view. Is this good for the resident or not? That's, that's the litmus test. Now, from there, then we move on down, because the answer's no, and we're not doing it. And there's a risk calculation. Okay, that Cray Bell thinks too, is we're not gonna risk, take risks at the residence. Like, you know, the other ones have to pay a bill for wrong, so we're not gonna do that. We're gonna try to do things that mitigate risk. That doesn't always mean getting the best price. Sometimes that means let's act, because we don't know what's gonna happen, and if we don't act and we miss it, they're gonna, they're the ones paying the price for that. Because again, these are opt-in programs. You don't have, you, you can get a better deal, it'll get you a better deal. We're not trying to pull people into the program, and they call us and say, what, you know, we, we said, well, give us your numbers, and we'll sometimes tell them, yeah, you should go do that. Or no, you should get out of that, give it to this right away, want them to be where's, where's best for them. And so that's just a matter of managing going forward. We'll do all those. But those resolutions, I, I guess I'm not gonna stick around unless you need me to. But if you get those passed, just make sure you get two copies signed, but they can have them stamp a copy and send my emails on there, if you send those to me, we'll just hang on to them. Okay. It's a lot easier to do that than try to do them afterwards. Plus, going down to the Montgomery Board of Elections is a lot of fun anyways, you'll want to do. All right. All righty. It's nice meeting you. You guys have my cards. The six one four number on there is my cell phone number. You can, I have plenty of trustees call me in the evenings and on the weekends, and what I'll tell you is, call me if I can, I'll answer the phone. If not, I'll call you back, or you can text me, whatever you guys wanted.
I think, I think you've been here before.
It was here years ago.
Yeah.
Because I pulled in, I was talking to Scott, actually, and I said, I've been here. I said, I recognize the building and parking lot.
You were here within the last ten years, because I remember.
Yes. Yes. Yes, it was, but it was probably probably in six, seven years.
Probably, yeah.
Yes, I, when I pulled in. Yes, I, when I pulled in the parking lot, I just thought, I've been here. All right, guys. Well, it was nice meeting you. I gave you a card.
You did. Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. Any other visitor comments? I can deal with anything. I'll mark, we have a fiscal officer report.
All right, good evening again. First of all, you have the minutes from last month's meeting, March thirteenth. Are there any changes?
I didn't see any errors.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three thirteen twenty-three regular meeting minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I've also given you the March financial reports. You have the March thirty-one fund status. You have a year-to-date through March thirty-one cash summary by fund. You have the month of March cash summary by fund. You have the March receipts, and you have the March payments. And I did want to point out two items. First of all, receipt number fifty-two, it's for fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-four cents from the Valley View Local School District, is the payment for the school resource officer for September through December of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, the police department is also at this point invoiced January, February, March, and we're awaiting payment for that. Also, warrant number five zero six six eight for five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to the Valley View Joint Economic Development District is our township proportionate share of the four jurisdictions initial contribution, and you did approve that back in March. Any questions about the financials? Hearing none, could I get a motion to approve the March financial reports and authorize the payment of March bills?
Make a motion to approve the March financial reports and authorize the payment of March bills warrants five oh six six four through five oh six seven three. Vouchers one seven two through two seven four for payroll, direct deposit, tax and penalties, and other electronic payments.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. I want to remind township residents that on the May second ballot, there will be a half mil renewal of the pool levy for five years. And although the ballot language will indicate that the purpose of the levy is for parks and recreational purchase purposes, I want our residents to be assured that the taxes raised by the levy will only be used for the Germantown people. And as Mr. Garrett just described to us, I have given you, oh, we have received, I guess, two draft resolutions from Traybill to place the electric and natural gas aggregation issues on the November ballot. The draft resolutions were then reviewed by the prosecutor's office of Mr. Peterson, and he had no concerns or comments. And if you're ready to approve those resolutions tonight, we will do that in two different resolutions, starting with two thousand and twenty-three seventeen.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash seventeen, a resolution authorizing all actions necessary to affect a governmental electricity aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to section four nine two eight point two zero higher price code and directing the Montgomery County Board of Elections to submit a valid question to the electors. Okay. The resolution is much longer, but that's all I really can agree.
Very good. Thank you. Um, is there any discussion of resolution two thousand and twenty-three seventeen? And again, this is the electric aggregation program. Hearing none, I will call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-three seventeen is adopted, and for the next one, it'll be number eighteen.
I'd like to introduce resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing all actions necessary to affect the governmental natural gas aggregation program with opt-out provisions pursuant to section four nine two eight point two six of the higher price code and directing the Montgomery County Board of Elections to submit a valid question to the electors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion of resolution two thousand and twenty-three eighteen for the natural gas aggregation?
I think even though we we have such few residents with with natural gas, what they said was it would still be beneficial to to run it, so. Let's see why we shouldn't along with the other ones, so.
It will be two different issues on the mess. So one could pass, one could fail, hopefully both pass.
Right.
Any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution two thousand and twenty-three eighteen is adopted. Uh, this past week on April sixth, the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation completed an onsite audit of the township's two thousand and twenty-two payroll. And a draft report will be issued. In fact, I already received it, I just haven't read it yet. But it'll be, um, it'll have any adjustments that were needed to our previously paid premiums. Uh, there is some follow-up that the chief and I need to do with the auditor, and um, that should change what, if any, um, adjustments they make. Um, I attended another of our Western Regional Council of Government meetings, that was on March twenty-first. Mr. Stubbs was also there, and I will leave it to you, Mr. Stubbs, to discuss the details during your report. Uh, as you know, I'm a member of the Germantown Lions, and I want to invite all the township residents to attend our club's drive-through chicken dinner on April twenty-second at the visitor's stand at Nysomner Field. Uh, meals are all pre-sale only. A full meal of a half-barbecued chicken, baked beans, slaw, and a dinner roll is twelve dollars. If you simply want a half chicken, it would be nine dollars. Tickets are available from any lion, and of course, I have tickets if you're interested. And finally, I want to express my condolences to the family of Lynn Cleveland on his recent passing. Mr. Cleveland was a regular attendee at trustee meetings over the years. At the time of his passing, he was an at-large member of the fire oversight committee. And here at the township, he served for several years through two thousand and twenty as the chair of the township's reserve officer, police officer, memorial fund board, and he was also a member of S E R T. With that, I am done.
Yeah, I don't dislike that. Mr. Cleveland, you help us out a little bit. Uh, police department report chief?
I made the six from nine to eleven. We have credit and dump it for unwanted medications, and any of you with life shredded, we do it right here on site. So we'll bring all your papers. And we have received a grant from the Department of Justice to outfit all of our full-time officers, the ballistic vests and carriers. So thanks to the
You're good, you're modeling well there.
Thank you. I'll pursue that. And that concludes my report.
Uh, room department?
I just have a couple of things tonight. Um, the first is, um, we advertised for seal bids for the two thousand and twenty-three Township Chip Seal Program. Um, it was put in the Miami Valley newspaper and ran for the last two weeks in March. Um, we received one bid from Ray Hensley Incorporated, it was received on four seven of twenty-three at ten thirty-nine A M. And at this time, I would like to open it. And I will read the bid amounts aloud and then review the paperwork to make sure that everything that was required is in there, and then we can decide whether we want to accept the bid in old business. Uh, for a single seal, uh, the price was two dollars and twenty-eight cents per square yard. And for double seal, it was four dollars and fifty-six cents per square yard from Ray Hensley Incorporated. Um, like I said, I will review this during the meeting, and we can talk later in the meeting about it. Um, the only other items I had on my report is, uh, Mr. Hamilton and I began mowing the township cemeteries and started prepping the road mowers for right-of-way mowing, which should take place in probably next month, depending on how fast the grass grows. And we removed all the uh de-icing equipment from the township dump trunks in preparation for ditching and asphalt. So that's all I have in my report.
Good, thank you. Uh, zoning report?
Um, I don't have a lot. There were five permits written in Germantown in the month of March. We had two ag barns, one on Front Road, one on Oxford Road, a freestanding sign on Dayton Germantown Pike, a single-family residence on Boomerstein Road, and a deck replacement on Big Twin Terrace. Um, also, the quarterly meeting of the Germantown Rural Zoning Commission was held on Tuesday, April fourth. The commission discussed and passed revisions to the definition section of the Germantown Township zoning resolution, and there will be a public meeting held soon to come. That is all I've got.
Wait, for our public meeting on that, I think we can just do it during work. Uh, trustee reports.
Um, our full board had our full board meeting. Um, they, the full board is fully staffed with the lifeguards and the set party, same as they had for last year. Uh, little parsons, but um they opened up a, a um a way to buy passes and full parties, rent full parties online, expected to make things a lot easier and be much more efficient for everyone. Um, the park board meeting we had the other day, uh, not much going on there. The two park board members were there. Um, Ben, um Amberby, he's with the city, he's our man to go to. He has put in French strings along the bike trail where we had water standing. Uh, he got those all done. They've all worked really well. Only thing, waiting on dry weather for him to degrade them, seal them, but they worked real well. Um, Mr. Burnett, he's been running on the trails and very happy with it. It's wet one day and gone the next. Worked ever well. The paving for the parking lot, uh, down at Purser Park, uh, I talked to you last meeting about the city possibly paying half of it. Um, so we didn't deplete our park board fund. So I talked to Judy about that, and they ran the numbers. I sent you guys an email earlier. Um, with that, they ran the numbers, it, yes, it did plead it, but not as bad as they thought it would be. But instead of going ahead and forefronting the money, they're they're going to do that if you need it, being assured. So we'll see how that goes. I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any problem with that at all. Um, or in my meeting, um, Mr. Randy, the block, uh, he come down from the Lions Club and presented a, a bench to, uh, David Short at the museum. Uh, at a recyclable plastic. Um, apparently, he needs to save all the bags, like, um burger bags, bubble bag, all those bags. He gets five hundred pounds, and every six months, he gets a bench for free. So he has donated one of those benches. We're going to need about nine benches at the, at the park, as we can tell. So Dave, um, at the museum, any nonprofit can get on this list. So I think that Lucy Gilbert's, uh, son is going to start like a campaign or whatever with this recyclable plastic startup, donating these benches. It can also be purchased for three hundred and eighteen dollars. So they're going to talk to some businesses if anybody wants to support this, so we can get our nine benches there. We'll see if they have to wait one every six months.
That's Any township resident that wants to donate their new plastic bags or any other plastic?
Is all, is only plastic bag or wrapped knock cups or bottles?
No, but a plastic wrapping that would go around the box?
That's correct.
You can
And we are going to, Lucy, like I said, is her, her son Eli is going to, my understanding, is going to be setting us up for the community.
That's fine. We can also take it through the Lions Club.
Absolutely.
Give it to any lion, we then give it to Randy Potts, who coordinates the question.
Yes. So, um we're having a meeting on the April twenty-fifth. So Tuesday at seven o'clock, we're going to be doing a walkthrough on the M M I to to see what the projects are going to be, where the trail is going to be, the memorial is going to be for people. And then what the network
And a couple times there.
Probably during about, uh, some water damage that the township roads had had. Some slips and this, that, and the other, they didn't take care of. They don't do a good job on that. Uh, that concludes my report.
So I guess, so is, is the parking lot going to be made?
Yes, 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 it already been made, already been proved.
Okay, so we're going to have somebody left over to
We're going to have one left over. Better than that they they expected, as you said, but she assured me, if something come up, the city would front the money to do it. They just don't want to front the money if they don't need to. They don't want to be moving money around.
Well, again, my concern is that fronting the money has to be paid back, so
We're going to pay it back next year.
Yeah, well, just so that my opinion, the park says the money will be there.
They have
They're going to do their own, but they were supposed to hear your comments.
Right, that's correct. Yep, it should be fine.
Fair. Let's take the work.
I get me to, we do. We'll see how it goes. Well, I can, it was about what you tell me.
Well, they've got all that excess money down there buying other property towns, so they should be able to help out soon. Uh, couple things tonight, not too much. Cemetery, a big thanks to Lou for tearing down the the shelter, the shed down there. Uh, I got to see some videos tonight that they took, where you were grabbing it and just putting it. So that was really cool. I appreciate it. It saved us money, time, um, and effort for sure. So greatly appreciated. Looks so much nicer if you drive by. Uh, that it's gone, this parking lot, which is, which is needed for us, where they have funerals and other other things, um, so people have a place to park. Uh, the barn's gone, so, um, it just looks better. It it makes it a lot better for the cemetery. So a huge thank you to Lou for bringing this truck down and and doing that for us. Um, I did hear they should have got a bigger dumpster. If they made it work. Um, Pete Burnett is doing great. He's working alongside of Mark Steiner. Uh, he's taking over as the Sexton after Memorial Day. Uh, he's doing a great job, learning every day. Um, and there's always something new to learn down there from Mark, so he's doing a great job, and we're going to we're definitely happy we overlapped the the couple of months to make sure there was a smooth transition of knowledge and everything that goes along with it. So that's been a great decision. Um, we did have one question come up tonight, and actually, question can kind of goes to you, Jeremy, if you got a second. Um, the concrete along the road. What's, first of all, do you know what the state right-of-way is?
The state?
Because on seven twenty-five, where?
I think it's sixty-six feet total.
Sixty-six from the center line.
No, thirty-three to the center line.
Thirty-three.
Sixty-six total.
Okay.
I believe, now that could change depending on where you're at.
Right. Um,
I think, I'm pretty certain out west, like from here to trouble County Line Road, it's sixty-six. Now, if you're talking somewhere else, I don't know.
So we've come into an issue with the concrete in front of that, where the hill kind of, it's leaning towards the road. Um, and we, we don't exactly know what to do about it. So, um, they asked if I'd ask you for the right-of-way, and if you had any suggestions on how that, get that concrete out. There's gas lines running under it. Um, and it's becoming, we're can, we'll leave a safety hazard. But it also is in front of the house and folding the, the yard back down across from the cap, the capital.
That does go in front of the house.
It goes in front of the house, and then it also crosses to the neighboring property as well. Um,
It's the retaining.
It's the retaining wall and the sidewalk, yes. Would you have any suggestions on where to start with the, looking into ways to remedy this?
Sounds like another job for Lou's gravel. Sounds like another job for Lou's gravel.
Well, I mean, in front of the house, I don't think you have the space to lay it back.
Right.
Now, in front of the property to the east, I think that would be my suggestion is just to remove the concrete. Now, if the gas lines are in the way and they're in the right of way, then they have to move them at their, at their cost.
Okay.
Now, if they have purchased private right of way, it's a different story. That becomes your responsibility for, to pay for them to move it if it's in the road.
So if the gas lines are in the right of way, the gas.
The gas company is required to move them if they're in the way.
Okay.
If they determine that they're, which I doubt they are because they're probably pretty deep.
Yeah.
But this, if the concrete wall is in the right way.
That's what we were wondering.
Yes, if the, if the property owner erected it, then it's going to be the property owner's responsibility to remove it and to rebuild it. So the state is not gonna, I highly date doubt that the state is going to invest any money in building your retaining wall.
I'm just laundering since it was in both, in front of both properties. If it wasn't possibly the state, if it wasn't just front of one property, then both those people would have had it been done that jointly.
Right.
That makes me think that it's possible that it could be the state.
That would take some investigation.
Takes some investigation.
Would you have a name of somebody to contact for that? Transportation. You can just let me know.
Yeah, I'll let you know. Um yeah, cause you're talking, you know, the records on that.
Oh, it's, the house was, they said tonight the house was built in eighteen sixty today. House been there a real long time, so it's a concrete and the sidewalk doesn't even go the whole way. So.
Same thing is you need to find out where the right of way to find this.
Yeah, and that's what we talked about.
If it's, the wall is outside the right of way.
It's a moot point.
Yeah.
Well, see, the other thing you have to take into account is the center of the road might not be the same as the right of way.
Okay.
The road can do this within the right of way.
Okay.
So, you know, generally you can stand in the middle of the road, but that's, if you're talking structures, permanent structures.
Yeah.
All bets are off. You can use that as a guideline. So.
Okay, well, I appreciate the information and if you get a name for someone at the state, let me know. Um so, but it is in bad shape. We're, we're just it, there was a recent funeral where a lot of cars parked on the other side of the road at the gas station in Pete's Place. And they crossed and then we're walking down that spot and we, we're just not sure that um how safe it is going forward uh with the way it's starting to, to lean more and more, so.
Do we need to be concerned with a Memorial Day pilgrimage?
Probably, yeah.
A lot of people take.
They take the sidewalk even though it goes and.
People are able to. For the bird to come down.
They stand on the wall or sit on the wall and watch the bird, the bird. Okay. So you may want to consider what needs to be done in that regard. Gotcha. All right, um. Moving on to the W R C G. Yes.
You might be able to do this backwards, find out where the property line of cemetery is. Which would be the line of the right one, that's correct.
No, the property line goes to the center of the road.
But it wouldn't there be, wouldn't there be a record of that to the cemetery coming back?
Of, of where the center line or where the?
Where the, one way or the other, from the center of the road from the property or to the right of way from the cemetery property.
Right, but what are you gonna reference it off of?
Whatever, whatever there is in the cemetery that to reference, property lines. Like survey the cemetery out to find.
Yeah, I mean you.
Instead of getting the state to tell you where their line is, do it from the cemetery side.
You, you could do that. I mean, then you.
Then we pay for it.
Then you pay for a survey.
I understand.
Yeah, you could do that. Yeah, you could get a survey to tell you where the center of the road is. Yeah, where your property line.
Where the cemetery property line, which.
Would be the center of the road, right?
Okay. All right, appreciate the, uh, the information.
Do it backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
Quicker than getting the state.
Oh, yeah, that's for sure. Uh moving on to the W R C G, Mark and I both attended the meeting. Um Rumkey also attended, but they, for some reason, did not bring their updated contract with them. They sent that out about a week or two later. Um Mark, did you see the?
Did.
Uh so I think the question now becomes, and I should, I should have made copies for you guys of this first page. But they, the bid that they gave us, or the quote that they gave us was um increasing our, our service per month to twenty dollars and forty-two cents for the oh-three or I'm sorry, the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, um October first to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. To twenty dollars per month, which we bill quarterly, so that bumps it over sixty dollars a quarter. But then the next year it goes up even further. Uh it's over twenty-two dollars per month for solid waste and recycling. And then in twenty-five to twenty-six, it goes up to almost twenty-four dollars per month. And that's going to be a significant increase on uh the residents of the township. And we, we have not passed along uh the last several rate increases, but this is incredibly significant, somewhere in the range of seventy-five to eighty dollars a quarter total.
It's a seventeen and a half percent increase on the solid. An eight percent increase this year in its recycling.
So.
And then two eight percent is next year and eight percent is following year.
The question becomes, because this, our current contract runs through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And it was also mentioned at the meeting by the, by the representative from Rumkey that no other company put a bid in last time. So I think that may have played a factor into uh, into the increase that we've been, we've been given. Are we comfortable signing this contract, knowing that we're going to be charging eighty dollars a quarter for trash bill? Or do we start the process to go out to bid again, hope us, another company comes and forces it lower? Um I think it's a tough call. I definitely wanted to bring it to this board um before we meet again as a W R C G, but this is a incredibly significant increase. Uh when she talked to us at the meeting and they didn't bring the, she said that it wouldn't be that much of it. We wouldn't it would be less than we thought. Well, that's significantly more than I would have guessed. So thoughts on, on what we should do here?
We're ultimately even, we remember that we have to finalize it within ninety days. Have it finalized before ninety days prior to the end of September. It's early looking by the end of June.
So.
A decision has to be made.
Yes, and we have uh, we can contact our attorney, which we've not done yet, which is here, here's the night. If we want to go out to bid and start that process, uh does anybody have opinions on the situation? I mean, this is really high. And I don't want to just sign it and accept it because it's never going to go lower again. I mean, eighty dollars, eighty dollars a quarter is where we'll be at in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, so what, it would, it's gonna be sixty dollars for the rest. Under a period and then go from sixty to?
It would, so it would be over sixty just to cover the cost. So say sixty-one just to cover. And then we go to what's sixty-six? And then it would go up to seventy-five.
And we have a certain charge to have and we just pass that along.
Well, no, so that's, we, we do, well, in the past, we've charged over, most recently because we've not increased the rate. The last several times we, the Rumkey's increased it to us, we're actually losing money in that trash fund right now.
I, I think the fact that no one in the last two years has come to bid on the project kind of has us over barrel with Rumkey. They don't, you know, and when you consider monthly costs, even if you go sixty-one dollars, it's twenty, twenty dollars a month for the trash and recycling. I still think that's probably, he would try to, because I, in person.
She pays a hundred.
She pays a hundred because she has a private, you know, she has to, herself, they don't have. So I, I.
Well, the, the, the problem is if we go out to bid, it could actually go up.
Well, exactly. It could go up. You could get no other bids.
And Rum, and she specifically mentioned at the meeting that they were the only company to come when we, when we even though the other companies had gone through the entire process, they were the only ones to put a bid in when it came to that time.
And I worry there's not enough time to get this done by yourself.
And they definitely waited a couple of weeks to send this out after she said that we, you know, whatever. They should have came to the meeting, so. That already, I'm not thrilled with Rumkey for how they've handled this because they should have been prepared in the meeting that they were invited to.
I, I think you're going to get some people complaining about it, and I don't think there's really a choice. I when you consider what's, what do we pay quarterly now?
Cause we've been eating that.
Okay, right now is billing us. Fifty-three oh four for this current year that we're in.
So, so we're billing the resident right now approximately three dollars a quarter less than.
Backs for a long. We had um cushion there and we just thought it was right to keep it as low as we could for as long as we could. So I think we've, we've definitely, in my opinion, we've done the right thing up until this point and doing the best we can to keep the the rates as low as possible. Um but this is just such a significant increase. I was actually shocked when I, when I saw what we were, where we're at in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six.
Well, when I saw where we were this year with a seventeen and a half percent.
Right.
Over where we sit today.
Right.
On October first.
And I don't know, is there any way to tell them to re- redo this and send it back?
I mean, everything was eight percent.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been three percent.
Right.
Up until now.
Right.
Eight percent, uh you could argue.
I know.
And then add eight and eight more.
Right. It's significant.
We opt out of the recycle. And only just have trash picked up.
That would save us four dollars a month.
I think you'd get a lot. No, I, I think that's an option.
And I think Rumkey would say, well, is there any way I'm not looking at these guys?
Well, that's what I don't, I don't know.
Because no one else.
Well, we don't, we put it up a bid seven years ago and that's the last time I went out to bid. And Republic and I think it was Allied or Waste Management. Republic, yeah, whatever. There's three total. And when we got to the final meeting, after they'd been through the entire process, they didn't show up to place the bid. So. Yeah.
Right.
I mean, three is bad amount, eight every year. And so we have a catch-up bid here, twice that amount.
Could you go to Waste Management and ask, say, hey, are you guys interested in bidding on this? Here's what we're, I mean, what you, what, the figures you have are public information. So you could go to them and say, this is what we're paying. This is what we're paying this year. You don't have to give me a number, but are you interested in bidding on it? And are you gonna show up?
Is this a public number since they've sent it out?
Well, our next meeting is, uh, they're just hooking it up.
Oh, since we just talked about.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
No, no, our W R G C.
Yeah, is it the twenty-eight?
Twenty-eighth, is it?
Is that right?
I don't know. Let me look.
Uh, save this.
So at that point, you're only a month away. And I take the W R G C to go out for bids.
And it would take.
This board can only recommend.
Right.
You want their W R C G to do.
Deb Cross, seven four 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 South Stivers. When was the last time we had a price increase?
Uh you mean to the residents? Uh I think we've only done it once since I've been here, so I'd say when you hear the, the first time. I mean, it's probably been five, six, seven years, maybe.
So we might hear some things, but we can always go back to.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the fact that we kept prices low.
Yeah.
We've, you know, eaten that cost.
And I think we are the cheapest out of everybody. I think Jackson charges sixty. Uh Farmers Bill, I think, has something else included in their trash bill. So we've done, I think we've done our due diligence in keeping it low for as long as possible, but again, it's just the I don't like the idea of charging eighty dollars a quarter. Not that, I, I'm not sure we have a choice, but.
Yeah, I mean, but that's, that's three years out, two years out. So we're gonna have to, tomorrow, we're not gonna have to charge. We charge sixty-one. And I, I, I still think it's a great deal.
Well, it's still less than a dollar a day. They pick it up, you know.
Yeah, they do the work, you know, putting, you know, whether, that means they don't have a choice.
We've had a lot less complaints since Rumkey got their act together right after we signed the contract. I, I don't think, are you hearing many complaints from?
Not as, not as many, no.
There were two calls last week.
Did you really?
But pick up.
Yeah, missing houses or.
Yeah.
But they were all in the same area.
Yeah.
Burn though.
It comes in spurts.
Okay.
And it was like five, three or four houses, five houses, but two, two of the residents called.
And I know in the past, because prior to me being here, they had switched trash companies. What it had been Rumkey and then it went to whatever was blue, was allied or whoever, Republic. And I know from what I've heard, there was lots of complaints across the whole, our whole W R C G at that time from uh not picking up trash, not caring. Um but across the board, it sounded like from our meeting that mostly there's, they're doing a good job at this point in time. So to switch and then to switch out all the cans, I mean, it's a whole ordeal to do it as well. So is it this board's recommendation then to go ahead, go forward with this contract? And we'll have to go out to bid no matter what in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six?
No, I say approve the contract. And if, and people, if people manage to tell them, hey, you haven't had a increase for seven, eight years.
Yeah.
This is like, just, just the price.
Well, I, I know, price feels up, price of everything is less.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a little bit painful with us when you consider monthly cost.
And it's still significantly cheaper than like Kirsten in Turbo County who has to have a contract around.
I think the next W R G C is the eight, a week from tomorrow, the eighteenth.
Oh, it's the eighteenth, okay.
And uh if with your recommendation, if they approve going forward, then it'll come back to you for a final resolution.
In May.
Approving.
May.
May or June.
May or June, okay.
As long as we take care of it by the end of June.
Okay.
When will the price increase become effective?
Well, we would have to get a resolution to pass that, so.
Okay.
Um when's the next build cycle and?
Just sent him out, so it would be July.
Well, we would have.
They would go out again in July.
So we'd have to have that done before then.
If you want to implement it before the October, an increase, okay.
Yeah, we can't keep losing money.
Can't keep losing money. So we're losing three dollars a month now.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But about a thousand households on that bill for thirteen hundred.
I think it's eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred.
But that's going to be a separate resolution from approving.
Oh, yeah, that's totally, those are two different.
They can be done.
Two different, we can do that.
That can be done anytime tonight or whenever. But the resolution, they first have to start with the W R G C and then come back here.
Right. Mrs. Cross.
Passive. Okay, Abigail Dennis, one three zero nine Oxford Road. Just if we let the residents know ahead of time, so they're not blindsided.
Good call.
Yeah. That it will go up, we can put, can we put it on their bill and then give them the extra three months?
I think it ought to go out in a letter, not the bill, because that bill's small.
Well.
A bloody letter and you need to let them know effective such and such a date it's going to this. And we apologize, but we know in advance, so we're telling you that effective such and such a date twenty twenty-four it's going to this. And effective such and such a date in twenty twenty-five it's going to that.
Yeah, because the.
They have the notice.
Yeah, I will respect the notice, especially the people that have lived here for a while.
Yeah.
That's the blindsided.
Right.
I mean, Sean is gonna get plenty of phone calls anyway.
Yeah, it's gonna be awesome.
Probably people that.
They should be on the phones. We just need a professional voice and smile. They should be on the phones, we just need a professional voice and smile.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, so I think actually, so right now, I, we're nine dollars and some change cheaper than Jackson a quarter. Cause they're charging sixty flat is what they said. So.
I didn't write it down.
I mean, we're significantly below other, others, we've done it for as long as we possibly can.
You spoiled them by not raising my rate.
Maybe we should have. So. But just to let the residents know, we've done our due diligence and it, it's just the economy we're in and Rumpy's kinda got us, so. With other companies not willing.
Do we want to make a resolution or we just, you give the recommendation to them?
So I'll take that, no, we don't need to do a resolution. I'll take our recommendation back, the WRCG will have to approve it. And then we'll. Get a resolution.
We'll do a formal resolution. Authorizing the signing of the extension.
Now, Farmers Bill, Perry, and Jackson are probably also discussing it at their meetings, so I'm not sure what they'll come back with either, so we'll. We'll, uh, we'll get to that when we get to that, so appreciate the input, cause it's just an unfortunate situation. That, that, the, is the county fixing Manning Road? No, okay, cause that's, that is awful.
I do not know if they're doing any paving east of Diamond Mill on May. Cause there is a section that's pretty rough down towards Germantown Liberty.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if they're paving that section, but I know from the Pike east to Manning or to Diamond Mill, they are, cause they, they started grinding it today.
Okay, I, I drove that last week for the first time in a while and it was, I couldn't believe how rough it had gotten.
Yeah, there is a sec, I'm hoping that even if they don't pave east of Diamond Mill, they'll at least run the mill. Have the paver down there and get that one spot, it is, it's pretty gnarly.
I got a, actually a coworker sent me a message today about the jet and filing their taxes, so appreciate Mark Keener for letting, letting, um, me know what to, how to respond, like the school's pulling taxes and her tax person. I guess it said she needed to file somewhere, so thank you for the help on that. So just, the jet tax is, is coming up now. And then lastly, Lynn Cleveland, he's come to meetings pretty much ever since I've been here and sad to hear of his passing and, years ago, I tried to get him to run for trustee and, um, gonna miss some other meetings, definitely. Great conversation, so, and that concludes my report.
Okay, thanks, Jay. Uh, my report on three twenty-one, twenty-three, I talked to a representative from Aspen Energy concerning electrical aggregation. I informed him that we decided to go to three bills so he can stop bothering me and starts calling. On four one twenty-three, Rand Se, Lyndamood, Lyndamood Hill resigned from the Fiery Mess Oversight Committee. And the four three twenty-three Fire AMS Oversight Committee meeting was canceled due to passing Lynn Cleveland and the resignation of Miss, of Miss Lyndamood. Um, so now we only have three members, so anyone who wishes to be on that board, certainly let the, let the city of Germantown know. I attended the Germantown Council meeting on four three twenty-three, the highlights were the Dory is set to start in early June. The required two public hearings have been held on electrical adding aggregation for the city. No date was given on the, or on the raids and when the aggregation will start. The pool levy again was, was mentioned, the fact that the wording was mentioned, the recent newsletter, newsletter was noted. And I, unfortunately, Mark, I should have given you credit for putting that, giving that a newsletter. I don't need credit. The city has hired a consultant from Community Planning Insight to update their zoning code. The budget is forty thousand dollars over two years, the four tasks will be to review the comprehensive plan, go through the current code, write an updated code, revise the current zoning map, so they're gonna spend the money to do that. There was some discussion on Airbnb's in the city, no act was taken to regulate as the state of Ohio may be introducing new rules soon. The, the trustees have a, a car, a piece of paper about a disclaimer, let me just read this. This is just, is a disclaimer that Clay Township has included in their privacy policy. Mr. Jacoby inquired if this should be something we should include in our homepage on our website. And Daniel Peterson was consulted and he stated including, stated including the same, the disclaimer wouldn't hurt. Wouldn't hurt, so let me just read it. German Township makes every effort to produce and publish the most current and accurate information possible. The township assumes no responsibility for errors in the information and does not guarantee that data posted is free from errors or anatheses. Similarly, the township assumes no responsibility for the consequences of inappropriate uses or interpretations of the data. No warranties expressed, expressed or implied or provided for the data herein, its use or its interpretation. Utilization of the church search facility indicates understanding and acceptance of this statement by user. So is, is it something you think we need in there? It's easily added, she. A moment ago. Already talked to them, yes. Then he said, let's go to the church.
Was hurt.
Oh, Mr. Peterson said. One of their, their times when Mr. Peterson was, weren't hurt, so. If that's okay, I think it does, it just, you know.
You wanna make that a motion?
Yeah, I mean, let's make a motion to have the disclaimer quoted to be, um, first page of the webpage.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm reaching, it was slightly irrelevant.
If it helps, great.
So I, I do have some notes in the radio tower, so if you don't mind, give me a few minutes to go through this, cause the question was, came up last time, who owned the radio tower? Mrs. Cross.
Can I speak about something that, uh, we were talking about on the pool, so before you get into that?
Yeah.
The pool wording for the ballot, I saw because she sent it out on her Facebook page that Germantown had put it in their little booklet, their little.
Newsletter.
Newsletter, uh, about the wording, did you see that?
Yes.
Did they send it to you?
Yes, everybody in the city got one.
But not in the township, right? They just.
All get city newsletter.
Yeah, so is, can that wording, if approved, can that go out on our mailing list? So that at least our residents out there know about the wording as well?
I think that's a great idea, Mrs. Cross.
Yeah.
I can do that. I'll work with Sean and we'll get that out, but, you know, our email list is what it is, it does not obviously include everyone, but.
But every little bit helps.
But every little bit helps, I agree with you. And then share it on the Facebook pages as well?
Yes.
So, uh, so again, the question was who owned the radio tower, so I did some digging and some research and I wanna thank Jeremy for finding me in the files, just about that. So I want to preface that, I, I talked to, uh, Bob Roebuck on three sixteen, the state of the tower is owned by the state of Ohio. So again, kinda hanging with you, I'll try to split this possible. In a June sixteenth, two thousand and five letter, German Township was approached by the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office concerning expanding the county's eight hundred megahertz trunks radio system to ensure optimal radio coverage in Montgomery County for all public safety agencies. Montgomery County had determined that the optimal location of the tower would be the property where the township offices are located. In July two thousand and five, Montgomery County made a proposal to build a three hundred foot tower on township property at an estimated cost of one point eight million. This tower would be the final site for Montgomery County to address public safety radio requirements. I think a lot of this came out of nine eleven when they wanted to make sure that the different agencies could communicate with each other. Uh, on five sixteen, two thousand and six, after some negotiations, resolution oh six dash eight five six was passed by the Montgomery County Commissioners authorizing a twenty-year lease on the property from six one two thousand and six through May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. The size of these properties is sixty by sixty feet. Lease agreement was also passed on five six sixteen, two thousand and six by the commissioners of the Germantownship trustees. From the lease agreement, the commissioners and the sheriff at their sole expense will place and construct upon the lease premises a three hundred foot tower equipped capacity supporting two cellular sites, a prefabricated communications building, a backup generator and a fuel tank for such generator. All said tower, towers and equipment will be owned exclusively and under exclusive control of the commissioners and the sheriff. In lieu of rent, the commissioners and the sheriff shall provide to German Township at no charge twenty-four hour per day safety communications and police dispatching services, et cetera. The commissioners and the sheriff shall furnish to the township at no charge, a backup generator shall supply emergency electricity to the German Township building as well as police premises. Letter of understanding signed May eighth, two thousand and six gave German Township the authority to market the tower themselves or go through representative. As far as like the cell tower. German Township signed the tower space lease contract with Patriot Communications on twelve eleven, two thousand and six. The exclusive right to the use of, including the right to grant to third parties by sublease, license, et cetera, portion of premises. No parties, uh, as, as in cell phone providers were ever interested in subleasing and the contract was terminated on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen. On July thirteenth, two thousand and fifteen, by a resolution two thousand and fifteen dash thirty-six, the Germantown Township trustees approved the state of Ohio lease agreement that officially transferred the lease on the property to the state of Ohio acting through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services on behalf of the multi-agency radio communication system, MARCS. MARCS provides statewide secure, reliable police service, wireless communications for public safety and first response. So, um, specifics of that lease, the lease is eighteen thousand dollars per year, the initial term is seven one, two thousand and fifteen through six thirty, two thousand and seventeen, it continues for a period of twelve two-year, two-year leases. MARCS also maintains the generator attached to both the tower and the township building. Section twelve point three states, MARCS equipment will remain in property of MARCS and the exclusive ownership is to be knowledge by the lesser with the German Township. Section one four states, a request of the lesser providing available availability of space. MARCS agrees to allow the lesser to install its public safety, public service, and or wireless broadband equipment on the MARCS tower. So I think that allows guards, law guards to put their radio up there, since it's public safety. Over section seven point three states, MARCS may enter into a total location agreements for the space of the tower. If MARCS allows a non-government entity to co- locate, co- locate on the tower, MARCS agrees to share the fee with the lesser. Seventy-five percent of the fee goes to the township. In an email dated twenty twenty, two twenty, two thousand and fifteen, German Township requested a lease fee of three thousand to cover the dispatch fees that were currently free. The MARCS representative stated in an email that dispatch fees were non-negotiable. So there you have that. The missing piece of the puzzle for me was not, was, uh, that was not included in the documents is the tower file. Uh, was that the actual sale of the tower, the buildings from Montgomery County to the state of Ohio. I reached out to Montgomery County Recorder Office on four six to see if the office had any record of the sale or transfer of ownership of, of the tower from Montgomery County to the state of Ohio. Employee recommended that I come down to the recorder's office and could examine the individual leases. Once there, I was referred to another employee that will work on finding the documents. Since the two thousand and six lease was signed by Commissioner W. Lieberman, who, the employee shouldn't be up in the commissioner's office or actually talked to W. Ryan and Judy Dodge. Commissioner seemed interested in the loss of paid dispatch fees for German Township, inquired what our current dispatch fees were, which I didn't know. The staff was able to provide the resolutions that canceled twenty release for Montgomery County, uh, which happened, occurred on eleven, three, two thousand and fifteen, and Germantownship trustees on nine fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. The meeting ended with the commissioner stating they would try to find the sale documentation. I did, then I did speak to Jake Miller from Montgomery County Sheriff's Office email, we could state it, the cost for the two thousand and twenty-three dispatch services for Germantownship was thirty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-one, the regular cost of thirty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-six minus a one-time credit of two thousand and seventy-five, it's gonna show up in the second quarter. So basically, my goal with doing this, not, hopefully we'll get back something from Montgomery County. The sale for my, uh, sale of the tower from Montgomery County to the state of Ohio really doesn't affect, um, something that we weren't involved in, just kinda happened. But my, my goal in this, if we can, uh, get this to, you know, finished up and put that in the file, so ten, fifteen years from now, somebody can look at this and kinda find out what the, what the time, time, what happened over time and how critical it is. But again, it was, it was a sweet deal, we got a free dispatching service. And there was a lot of negotiation with Bob Roebuck, as far as trying to get to, to pay more than eighteen thousand dollars. Problem being that Brookville, which, who owned the, the land and the tower, we're, we're only gonna get twenty thousand dollars, so we were the cutments. So there you have it.
We were also working with Montgomery County Prosecutor's Office at the time, who was also representing county at the time, so I think we kinda got the short end of the stick. For sure. So that was, that was unfortunate, it was a.
Well, the thing is, that, that the current, the, the contract, the original contract with Montgomery County should have gone between twenty-six. We should still be getting free dispatch if you go out of contract.
This is one year.
Yeah, but, I don't know how that happens, so.
And that's why I think this year we transferred the, the money we do get back to the police.
The police, yeah.
To help offset the dispatch cost.
But it was interesting, it seemed like, you know, uh, we, we could have put a couple cell providers up there, but no, I think cell providers probably wanted to own their own tower. And, uh, MARCS would allow us, if they approved, they would, they would, we could put, you know, probably cell carrier, if they were to get like, like, uh, who said, we can't. Don't do that. But appreciate your hanging in there for like five minutes.
No, that's okay, yeah. When it happened, it, it, we kind, it was kinda shocking that what had happened and they didn't honor. And then we tried to get the prosecutor's office involved at the time and forgot that, it was, we were fighting ourselves, so. We lost.
That is all I have. Jeremy, all business?
I did get a chance to review the twenty twenty-three chip sale bid and Ray Hensley Incorporated has included the required bid and contract bond paperwork, also the certificate of liability insurance and the certificate of Ohio Urus Workman's Comp. Just so you know, the price that they gave of two twenty-eight per square yard is down from two thirty-nine last year. And for double seal, it was four fifty-six for this year, last year it was four seventy-eight, so, um, surprisingly reduced, um, a small amount. But, um, it's my recommendation that the board accept the, uh, bid for the twenty twenty-three chip sale project to Ray Hensley Incorporated. Yeah, for the prices of two dollars and twenty-eight cents per square yard for single seal and four dollars and fifty-six cents per square yard for double seal.
Resolution nineteen.
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-three, nineteen through nineteen for acceptance of the bid for the chip seal from Ray Hensley, twenty twenty-three, at the price of two twenty-eight, two dollars and twenty-eight cents a square yard for single and four dollars and fifty-six square yard for double.
I'll second.
Any discussion of the resolution?
Nice that it went down a couple cents.
Yeah.
Every little bit helps.
Exactly.
All the role, Dr. Cross?
Yes.
Ms. Christov?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yeah.
And is relation twenty twenty, nineteen, nineteen adopted? Any other business?
I have one more thought about the cemetery.
Sure.
Uh, I did the bridge, the big bridge, Blommerdell, all big monuments in the center line of that road on the cemetery side. I think you could talk to Mr. Burkert.
Okay.
And relatively simple, give you some. Right way.
Okay.
Monuments in the center of the road down.
Got it.
We're talking monuments, what is it?
Center line, uh, survey monument, not, not death monument.
Like those little squares?
Yeah, the little.
There's actually, if you look there, there's actually a.
A cover plate.
Cover plate, down inside it.
That's what the cover plate is.
I'll do that.
It's monument.
Yeah, there's a concrete or a stone monument underneath.
Okay.
Sign that cover.
Thank you, guys. All right, any other business?
All right, one quick thing, uh, if you gentlemen haven't, weren't aware of House Bill twenty-three, uh, passed and that affects the township by increasing, uh, the force account limits, which is basically the amount we have to, uh, bid threshold, uh, for bidding. For a longest time, it was forty-five thousand dollars, anything above that, any contracts above that, you had to, uh, bid it out for public bid. On July first, I think is when it takes effect, in this year, twenty twenty-three, it goes from forty-five thousand to a hundred and five thousand.
Um, on July first, I think is when it takes effect in this year, twenty twenty-three, it goes from forty-five thousand to a hundred and five thousand for townships. So a significant increase in the amount, uh, threshold that we have to bid projects out. So, um.
We're still looking at the parking lot here to do something.
Yes. And if they, that happens after July first, then we're removing the thresholds. So.
Remove this funding for townships for roads.
I talked to Mr. Heaston about that and I'm not sure we really understand what they're talking about, increasing that thirteen million dollars or wherever it was for townships. But, um, I'm planning on.
There's money out there. The question is how is it?
Yeah, how are they going to allocate it? Where's it going to come from? When are we going to see it? So I might. Definition of what all that means.
Here we'll be hearing from the OTA with more details. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Appreciate you hanging in. We are adjourned at eight thirty.